The July thirteenth, twenty seventeen Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Dr. Kerry Hilliard, Senior Pastor, First Baptist Church, Longview. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our God, we come before you and ask for your blessing. We thank you for the freedom that you've bestowed upon us here in the United States of America. We exercise this freedom tonight as we gather as a city council. We pray and ask for your blessings over Mayor Mack and the city council as they deliberate concerning all of the agenda items that affect our city. We thank you for the city of Longview, this rich heritage that goes before us. We pray that we, each one, would do our part to leave a legacy to those who come behind us. We ask your blessing over Chief Steelman and the Fire Department. We thank you for their service and the hard work and, God, the way that they provide safety for each of us who live in the city of Longview. God, we pray and thank you for Chief Bishop and the hard work he and his police department are doing to assure our safety as well. We ask your blessing over them, their leadership, and, God, grant them wisdom as they provide safety and serve the public. We ask your blessing over this task force that has served our city and assisted our mayor with ideas concerning how to bless homeless people and also how to help our city to grow, God, economically but also in means to provide assistance to homeless people and help them to better their lives. God, we pray and ask your blessing that you would be glorified in and through this city. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kerry. Appreciate you so much and your words. Tonight, in employee recognition, in June, Longview Police Sergeant Kerry Higginbotham received a call from Katie Williams requesting if an officer could drive by her son Mason's police-themed birthday party with the lights and sirens on. Sergeant Higginbotham knew that Mason's sister had been in the hospital in Dallas for a while and that Mason and his family had been separated during some of that time. So he contacted Sergeant Chad LaMaire and together with other officers, they decided to do a little more than just drive by with the lights on. The Williams family contacted our local news organization and they covered the story. This is the story that aired on KLTV. Please watch the video.
Four-year-old Mason loves everything about police, even driving his own play squad car. For his party Saturday, his parents asked police to drive by and maybe hit the siren.
And said, "Hey, you know, do you mind? Just drive by, flash your lights, take a couple of pictures." That's all we were expecting.
What they got, they never expected.
First, we saw the huge swap vehicle and then I believe there were two cop cars behind it. Yelled at Mason, told him there was a surprise for him outside and he ran, looked out the front door and, "Oh, my gosh!"
Complete with several officers and a remote miniature that Mason was allowed to control, the four-year-old was in his element.
Just really went way out of their way, way out of their way, you know, to make it a special birthday for him.
Police also knew that the Williams daughter Ellie has special medical needs, which puts a strain on the family's time together.
My daughter, she actually was in NICU at Children's in Dallas and we were gone for almost two months. So he had a really hard time. He didn't get to see her. They heard our story about, you know, the journey that we've been going through. He handed us a card and he said, "Inside, we have some things for you." There were a couple of gift cards in there with a really sweet note on the card.
Interacting with officers and given plenty of souvenirs, it was everything the family hoped it would be.
You know, if somebody does something nice for you, it's something, but if somebody does something nice for your child, it means a whole lot more.
I really don't think he'll forget this birthday party.
Bob Holmer, East Texas News Weekend.
As a result of the local stations covering the story, this was picked up by the national news and was featured on ABC's Good Morning America. The national coverage is a testament to the great citizens of community that we have here in Longview. Mason and his family were extremely appreciative of the officers and their efforts to ensure Mason got to meet his heroes on his birthday, making it a birthday he will always remember. These officers are a prime example of how our officers are going above and beyond to show LPD's dedication to our community. These officers involved include, please come forward, Sergeant Kerry Higginbotham, Sergeant Chad LaMaire, Sergeant Rebecca Martinez, Officer Drew Allison, Officer Conrad Roberts, and Officer Brandon Thornton. To say I'm proud of these guys will be an understatement. This is what we want to be about and this is what we are about in our public safety. We have, I've said it before, I'll say it again. We have the best public safety in Texas because those gentlemen sitting right there admonished these guys and helped them to be what they are, to make our citizens so blessed to be a part of this. Guys, you all are awesome. I mean, we know you're awesome, but, you know, to do something for this, for a child like that, is something he'll never forget, the families will never forget, and we won't forget. We appreciate that. It was not necessary. You did it and we really thank you because you guys, you always know how to answer the call. Thank you so much. Once again, gentlemen, thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you what you do for Longview. Y'all are heroes. Appreciate you so much. How about that? Good Morning America. Huh, pretty cool, huh? That's what's good for Longview right there. It's always fun when I get to do community recognition, especially when they have no idea that they're being recognized. Tonight, community recognition, which is, we started a couple of meetings ago, something I think is very important, where we recognize citizens in our community that do things that, they do it because they want to it, not because they're going to get recognized. And I'm pretty sure the person here tonight has no idea why she's here because I didn't tell her, but she was happy and kind enough to be here, Ms. Melissa Kitchens. I guess you know you're out here now. Tonight, I'm going to recognize Melissa Kitchens and I'm going to tell you why. First off, Melissa is married to one of our Fire Department members, Clay. She's also the children's minister at Alpine Church of Christ, which is wonderful, but here's what she really is. She's the inspiration behind a movement in our community for our children called Mission Longview. And what Mission Longview is? Mission Longview is where they have a group of kids that spend a week doing things in our community to help our community, doing mission work in Longview to help Longview. And to me, there's nothing greater than that. So Melissa, I want you to come forward. I'll be honest with you. I had never met Melissa before, what, almost two and a half years ago. She, through a friend, called me and said, "Would you come speak at Mission Longview?" I didn't have a clue what Mission Longview was, but if I'm available, I try to be available and I try to do things. And so I said, "Absolutely. Tell me what it's all about." And she explained it to me. And I went and I spoke with these children and literally it changed my perception of what we do and how we do it. Because I'm looking at these children out there, what are their age ranges?
Fifth through eighth grade.
Fifth through eighth grade. Hundreds of them that are out there spending a week going to places in Longview, ministering to people in our community that need ministering to and making a difference, a true difference in our community. And it changed how I look at what I do. And I started doing things in my community through my business where I try to do something for people that I can make a difference at. So it made a difference in me and I see this every year. And I told her, "Please don't not ask me. I want to come back every year." I look so forward, besides they have really cool t-shirts. I've got three of them now. But to see these children out here and I get to speak to them, then they ask me questions and their questions are, they just go straight into your heart. Their hearts are so pure and so perfect. And I watch them and I think, you know, where else should we be doing it? I know we should do things in other places. I know that. And I'm not saying we should. My daughter's in Russia right now doing a mission trip and I'm terrified every night, is she going to be okay? But I know she's doing the Lord's work. But when I see these children doing mission work right here where we live that will make a lasting difference and a lasting impression on people, all I can say is, "You got it." You see it and you got it and you pass on these kids and you can see it in their eyes. It's amazing. So my hat's off to you, Melissa. Thank you for what you do. You're amazing. Thank you so much. That's community recognition right there. Thank you, Melissa. Where are we? We are now to citizen comment. I do have some speaker cards tonight. Mr. Jim Martin.
I come tonight, it's been a long time since Dr. Mitchell spoke here about my quarter park building two-half basketball courts. Steve ought to get behind this. I see in the paper Wednesday, $205,000 was spent to a firm to tell us what, and we had 24 volunteers. They probably knew more about it than the people out of Fort Worth and we wasted $205,000. I don't know how much money is being wasted behind a bad Chevrolet for infested walking park. It's a crying shame that we got kids over there waiting to play basketball because they got one court. If I'm not mistaken, it was a bond passed to upgrade the parks. We got a monkey bar over there before the bond was passed or they got the money. And then they put a pavilion top on it. Nothing else has hardly been done. We got kids over there wanting to play basketball, stay off the streets, stay out of trouble. And we're building another mosquito walking trail and we're spending $205,000 in Fort Worth for what I hadn't figured it out because I can create business downtown. You won't like what goes downtown, but ain't nobody going down there. There's nothing down there. Why would we want to waste money when we can help kids at these parks that's supposed to be better for our kids? But no, I don't know. I've got a different attitude. I think a little simple. I don't have an education to think like most folks over my head, but I can tell you one thing. You people on the council and the city manager, where y'all waste money? You ought to go in your closet and thank God somebody hadn't worked on your head. Sorry, I'm not going to do it. But it's a crying shame that you waste money. And I see some of these walking trails. I don't see that many people walking. Let them walk to the tracks where they pay taxes. You go up on a property value every year. So I know it's more money because Scott Zorn's building more restaurants and everything. And they say it's going to take, I don't know how many years to build that baseball field for it to move into the park, which all it takes is a bulldozer and a pile of dirt and a fence company. I don't know. I just, I get upset. I keep saying I'm not coming back, but I just see things that need to be done, streets. And y'all sit there and I know y'all think, "Well, that idiot, I wish he wouldn't come back no more." But I'll be back. I believe me because I'm not going to give up. Might run for council and you sure won't like it because I don't believe in wasting money. I don't have money to waste. I pay my taxes and I see them go to waste. It's kind of like the state and the federal and goes all the way up, but that's all I got to say. And I hope Steve gets something done. Go out there right now. When you leave this meeting, you can see them kids trying to play basketball out there. They're sitting there waiting to have their turn. That's a crying shame. That is a crying shame. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Eddie Dickard or Pickard? I'm not sure which one. Dickard? We have to have you at the podium because of the camera and whatnot. I'm sorry, sir. They'll be okay. They don't mind moving.
Mayor, I've been a citizen of Longview, Texas for seventeen years now. The last two years, I've been homeless. Not once was I asked by this task force how the homeless people could use help in the city. To me, that was a waste of time and everybody's effort. I have my own ministry. I'm a licensed minister. I spend my day, I'm in shorts and shirt and I'm apologizing for that. Normally, I'd wear a suit and tie. But I've been at the parks all day with homeless people, asking them what they need and what kind of help they need. Not one time did a member of that task force come down to any of these parks and talk to the homeless people about what they could do to help us. It's very upsetting. Now, to Chief Bishop, I would like to know, has there been a new law put in place? Because over the last two weeks, myself and ten members of the Longview Committee that are homeless have been arrested for criminal trespass, for being on a public sidewalk waiting on a bus to pick us up. Has the council passed a law to wait on a bus at a bus stop on a public sidewalk and then bicycle police show up and arrest us for criminal trespass? You know, I need to know this so I can tell the homeless people if that's the case. We buy a monthly bus pass, pay $40 for a monthly bus pass to ride a bus around the city of Longview to go places because we don't have transportation. It's just very upsetting. And Chief Bishop, I support the Longview Police Department. If it wasn't for the Longview Police Department, I'd probably not be here today because Sergeant LaMaire and Officer Drew Allison went beyond their duties, bought me a bus ticket to Dallas, Texas, to Parkland Hospital to give me psychiatric help that I needed. They didn't have to do that. They paid for that out of their pocket. They went together and bought me a ticket. They knew I needed help. I walk 10 miles a day and I ride a bike at nighttime, 10 miles a night. I called 911 last night because there was some criminal activity going on over around Marbly at Newgate Mission. Drugs, alcohol, and prostitution. Four officers showed up, threatened to throw me in jail for abuse of the 911 system when I had had my life threatened by four black men with knives and beer bottles who were drunk, smoking K-2, and doing marijuana. You know, what is the city police's job? It says on all their vehicles, "To protect and serve." To me, that is not protecting and serving. When you threaten to throw somebody in jail when they call for help, when somebody's about to attempt to take their lives. I addressed this issue yesterday with Chief Bishop supervisors and they're aware of it and they are investigating the situation for me and I do appreciate that. But I wanted the city council and the mayor and Chief Bishop to hear my concerns about this because these homeless people are not playing around. They all have lawyers and they're ready to file a lawsuit against the city of Longview right now. And I promise you, if these issues are not addressed, it's going to happen. And I'm going to be leading the way because I have one of the best defense attorneys in East Texas already lined up. And these guys have their own lawyers. And this issue needs to be addressed. And the harassment of homeless people, just because we have beards and mustaches and maybe wearing shorts and t-shirt, hanging out at a public park, waiting on a bus, on a public sidewalk, and get arrested for criminal trespass, I haven't ever heard that in any other city happening. So I'd just like to know if that's a new law or something that has been passed or a new city ordinance that has been passed that we don't know about.
Sir, your time is up, but if you want to continue just for a few, I'll give you just a few more minutes if you need it. But your time is up.
I just want to answer. I need to know what I can tell these folks.
If you'll stand at the back room, we'll have someone come and address your concerns for you so that you'll know your answers to those questions, okay?
Thank you.
And just so you know, sir, there were members of the task force that did go pursue to McGrill Park and talk to homeless people and got suggestions from them.
There's more parks than McGrill Park where the homeless hang out.
I'm saying just, I'm saying more than just McGrill Park, but there are people that did go and do that and got information from them. And we also had an ability to have emails sent to the city to give any suggestions that you wanted to. And I don't see your name on any of those suggestions because we were open for four months for suggestions. So it was available.
For two months, I was in jail for a month and a half for a criminal trespass charge.
Just let you know it was available, okay, sir?
On a public sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. We'll address your concerns right at the very back if you go to the back of the room, okay? Thank you, sir. I have no more speaker cards. Would anyone else like to speak and spell out the card after the speaking? Very well. Thank you. We now are to presentation. I don't want to stand here and look at you all. Usually, they're looking this way. It's kind of weird. I'm not sure if I like it with my back to them. Shaun, we just here? We're good again?
Well, good evening. This is an exciting day where we come together to talk about our homeless task force and what we have done over the past number of months for this community and want to present it to the council, to the public, to be aware of where we are and what we've done and where we might be going. First off, the mission of this task force was to get everybody on the same page, to determine what we can do collectively to address homelessness and reduce our homeless population. Our number one goal in this whole exercise was to find ways to reduce our homeless population. The task force members were divided into two groups to get the most accomplished. Group one was involved with shelters and direct care. Group two included health, business, and other services. I'm going to read the names of the task force members and many of them are here in the audience tonight. As I read your name, please stand when I read your name. Alan Johnson with Jesus Burger. This is group one, Shelters and Direct Care. Andrea Dolehite, Made to Love Ministries. Captain Mark Jacobs, Salvation Army. Doris Remaley, Longview Interfaith Hospitality Ministries. Eric Berger, Highway Eighty Rescue Mission. Helen Johnson, House of Hope. Holly Fuller, Partners in Prevention. James Bettis, Longview Police Department. Janice Bunt, Caring and Sharing. Jeff Borgwart, Ministerial Alliance. Johnny Johnson, Community Outreach Mission. Karen Holt, Northeast Texas Homeless Consortium. Linda Cunningham, Newgate Mission. Robin Frua, Longview Community Ministries. Shannon Trest, Women's Center of East Texas. Group two included health, business, and other services. Anthony Brooks, Longview Regional Medical Center. Brenda Day, Beavis Doors. Kerry Hilliard, First Baptist Church. Cheteva Marshall, Longview Housing Authority. Donna Sharp, Greater Longview United Way. Hank Hester, Longview Fire Department. Edmond White, Community Healthcare, Health Corps. Jeff Brown, Wellness Point. Josh Tub, Greck County Sheriff's Office. Kevin Marshall, Greck County Veteran Services. Louis Thompson, Ministerial Alliance. Linda Oyer, East Texas Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. Michael Black, JBA Financial Services. Murray Moore, Business Owner, Property Manager. Ron Short, Christmas Good Shepherd Medical Center. Scott Lewis, Longview Transit. And Tim Wiseman from Wiseman Ministries. Please, a big round of applause for these citizens that took their time for this task force. Thank you all so much. And as you can see, that is a very diverse group of individuals coming from all facets of life in Longview who deal every day with our homeless population. This is what they do and this is how they function. So to say we didn't know what was going on with the homeless population is just, well, we're just going to leave that alone. In looking at what government can feasibly do, we reminded ourselves of the role of government. The primary role of government is protection of its people through laws, ordinances, rules, regulations, and services. That is the role whether you are a resident with a home or a resident without a home. For this reason, it is important to protect all of our citizens. While we're looking on how to serve our homeless population, we do not need to neglect the remainder of our population in doing so. We determined that the role of service providers are the following. Shelters provide emergency and transitional housing, feed those in need, help individuals become self-sufficient, and offer life-changing programs. Churches provide spiritual services, resources, and referrals to other service providers. Nonprofits provide specific services and resources. Good Samaritans act on their own free will, responding to a need in which they see. The task force suggested that homeless population be served differently depending on their specific situation. We determined there are homeless categories. There's situational homelessness, there's sheltered homelessness, there's unsheltered homelessness, and there's chronic unsheltered homelessness. We decided that each category is different, but most homeless people, look at this, that we can help have temporary problems. There is a segment of our homeless population that we cannot help and they do not want our help. That's just a fact of life. We determined that we need to coordinate efforts and not duplicate them. The task force saw an opportunity to better communicate between shelters, nonprofits, and law enforcement. They suggested quarterly meetings between each other. They discussed utilizing mission-tracking software. They discussed applying for grants to bring an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer to assist with homeless programs. They evaluated Houston's The Way Home program as a model for coordinating homeless efforts. The Way Home is a collaborative effort. It's a model to prevent and end homelessness in Houston, Harris County, and Fort Bend County. What's interesting about this Way Home initiative, they undertook this to encourage their citizens to donate to this program rather than to the individual standing on the street corners. These are examples of how the marketing of their residents occurred. Of course, this is what works in Houston. These dollar amounts may not actually be appropriate for our area, but if you'll look, $25 provides cleaning supplies for a newly housed young adult. $50 bedroom supplies and bathroom linens. $100 equips a house with a full set of kitchen supplies. $250 covers the cost of an entire welcome basket. These are numbers that worked in Houston with their Way Home initiative. We found that very helpful in how we're trying to coordinate what we're doing here in Longview. The Way Home initiative also provides opportunities for residents to get involved in ending homelessness by volunteering, donating, and advocating. Those are important issues in order to tackle this. We mentioned AmeriCorps Vista Volunteer. The AmeriCorps members provide a year of full-time service to nonprofits and public agencies to create and expand programs that bring individuals and communities out of poverty. AmeriCorps is administered by the Corporation for National and Community Services, which is a federal agency and the nation's largest grant maker in support of services and volunteering. They house veterans, veteran homelessness, mental health services, and those are just some of the priorities for the AmeriCorps programs. During our study and communication with our entities here in Longview, we determined that there are enough beds available in Longview so that no person ever has to sleep on the streets. In a 2017 point-in-time survey, it revealed that we have approximately 470 homeless individuals in Longview. When we communicated to all the programs and entities that provide beds for the evening, we determined we have more than 400 beds available every night with the ability to house as many as necessary on a temporary basis for those who desire to have a bed. But remember, not everybody wants a bed. But there is no reason someone should have to sleep on the streets in Longview, Texas because we have enough beds available to house anyone, any night of the year. We examined the possibility of a centralized area for the homeless population, not in the center of town. The desire for centralization of services should not be confused with forced relocation of individuals. Our homeless population in Longview have every right to assemble as any other Longview residents have. We determined instead of one location, it's more feasible to have multiple locations of services in coordinated areas. These coordinated areas make it easier for those providing services, easier for those who need services, and government nonprofits can provide onsite services at these established locations. This is a map showing where all of our outreach and service providers are in Longview at this point in time. You can see that we're pretty spread out all over the community. We determined one way to serve more people is to host service fairs, to offer centralized services and information to homeless individuals. These will be held periodically at central locations such as the exhibit building. These could be held at a mobile event wherever homeless individuals congregate. These will be an opportunity for individuals to get ID cards, apply for work, find housing, and receive services. And the goal is to host the first service fair at early 2018. This will allow what we call kind of one-stop-shop location. It's very important to get this population ID cards because without an ID card, it's very difficult to get work. It's very difficult to receive services. So this is a way to get people together in one location, provide everything at one time to help our population not have to go to different areas because it's confusing when you're trying to do that. So this is a coordinated effort to make it easier for our population. We suggested moving the Longview Transit Transfer Station away from McGrill Plaza within a short period of time. A federal grant has been applied for and already been received. The move is scheduled to occur in late 2018 or early 2019. This will allow McGrill Park to become a park again. This is a rendition of the new Longview Transfer Station, and this new station will accommodate all of the citizens of Longview. We have all seen signs like this before. So one issue examined by the task force was how can the city of Longview utilize able bodies for those who want to do work? Because if you hold up a sign that says homeless will work for food, we're going to take you for your word. We're going to find a way to put you to work. The task force suggested using homeless residents who are willing, there's the key word, willing to work to assist any resident, business in our city, as well as the city of Longview with any labor needs that they may have. We need to create a six-month pilot program in coordination with an existing date program already in place. The House of Disciples really stepped up to spearhead this pilot program. The program is designed to provide labor for individuals, businesses, and the city of Longview. Provide compensation and a job for participants. To provide life coaching and mentorship for participants. To provide incentives to encourage participation such as groceries and meals. Provide opportunities to learn job skills and a consistent wage. They're providing a doorway out of homelessness. So how will this program work? Each worker will be paid $8 per hour and be able to work six hours each day. Program will be coordinated by one full-time staff member and one weekend staff member. Each worker will be provided transportation to and from work and meals while they are working. Program will provide life skill training and referrals to services. Now, in order for this program to be fully funded, the customers, meaning the individuals, employers, and businesses in Longview, they'll be charged $11.17 per hour for whatever services workers are performing. And this allows us to run the program with no funds needed, no fundraising, no grants. And you have to realize, sometimes we have to pay a little bit more in order to help those that are in need. But that's what has to happen for this program to work. And I expect businesses and employers to step up and help in this program. It's time to put our money where our mouth is. We need to be willing to step up and step out if that's what we want to see, to have real results in Longview. There are two types of workers in this program. One, there are individuals who work only for a day, to have money for that day, and they're not opting for any further assistance. There are other individuals that want to look for a personal growth plan to help them out of this homelessness situation. Individuals will be assigned a life coach, to mentor, to set goals, and direct towards other agencies to assist with obtaining proper IDs, assist with health needs, assist with housing, assist with addiction counseling, and assist with education. So if someone wants to work, we will allow them an opportunity to do so for whatever reason they see desired. It's not our, we don't have to determine why they want to work. If they want to work, we want to put them to work, to give them that opportunity through this program. So if you want to work, there's going to be a chance. If you hold a sign up, we're going to come get you because we're going to have a place for you to work. We saw a need to communicate to residents about the best way to help the homeless population. We need to encourage the general public to not give money directly to homeless individuals, but instead give outreach bags, which is what I have here. And you can see in this outreach bag, we have, there's literature, there's information on where to go to get resources for the homeless individual. These outreach bags have, you know, non-perishable type foods in them. They have water. This is, this is an outreach bag that we want to encourage residents to utilize, to give to these individuals. Because notice, there was no money in that bag. That is not the way to help our homeless population. We need to give directly to these nonprofits that provide services. We need to develop a marketing campaign to share this message. Need to offer trainings to nonprofits, churches, and law enforcement about best practices for helping the homeless. The nonprofits know how to best use this money better than any of us do individually, so let's let them do their jobs. By giving money directly to the homeless, we're actually perpetuating homelessness rather than helping them find a way out. We have received and reviewed study after study from city after city, from Portland to Charlotte to Houston, Seattle, San Francisco, the list goes on and on, to show that this hurts the population rather than helps the population. We can utilize Houston's MeaningfulChange.org as an educational model. This meaningful change that it's okay to say no to panhandlers. Meaningful change, not spare change. Here's a video.
Imagine yourself driving down the street. You pull up to a stoplight and you see a person panhandling. You feel compassionate, so you give them some money. You drive away feeling good about your act of kindness, but did your spare change really provide meaningful change for that person? When homeless individuals can get by for another day through panhandling, that's one more day they aren't receiving meaningful change. By giving a dollar to the Way Home through the Meaningful Change Campaign, you give homeless individuals a chance at dignity instead of perpetuating their life on the street.
These are examples of the marketing campaigns used by other cities to help educate the public on handouts and what not to do. We need to implement solicitation-free zones here in Longview. These zones would prohibit solicitation, including panhandling within key commercial corridors such as downtown, Loop 281, Fourth Street, Highway 80, as well as near ATMs and business entrances. Our solicitation-free zones will be modeled after other communities who have already done this, such as Dallas and Fort Worth. This is an important part of protecting our area businesses. This is where we need to see, this is where we usually see the increased panhandling activity. And this helps the residents in our community that have businesses that are being impacted by this panhandling that goes on day after day. City staff is already evaluating current ordinances that we have in place and will recommend how we can modify them. It's been determined that we need to modify existing ordinances on encampment, trespassing, and solicitation. We must prohibit aggressive solicitation. City attorneys are researching and drafting these ordinances to ensure constitutionality. We need to consider alternatives to fines and jail time for minor issues. We'll be modeled after our drug courts. It does no good to throw these individuals into jail. It burdens our court system. It puts an incredible burden upon our community. It's not necessary. We got to find alternatives to doing that. Need to consider collaboration between law enforcement and the Greck County Wellness Care Collaborative. We need to address the mental health crisis occurring in our homeless population. We have to identify homeless mental needs. We have to find ways to offer treatment. We have to advocate for federal state funding to help address this national problem. We have to consider establishing these day shelters, day activity shelters, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Explore financial incentive-based programs to encourage residents to complete mental health treatment. We have to develop better partnerships between law enforcement, mental health professionals, and service providers. We need funding from the state on all of these ideas. Funding is the key to mental health. It takes trained professionals to handle the situation and facilities to accommodate these patients. This is not something that's done by the layperson. We must look to our state representatives to help us in funding in these areas because that's where the money has to come from. This is a national problem that takes a state problem, becomes a local problem. We need to consider these peer-run day activity shelters. Homeless individuals need somewhere to go during the day while the overnight shelters are closed. A peer-run concept would allow individuals who have been homeless to help serve as peer leaders. Day shelters will provide a structured day and other assistance. This is a concept suggested by Community Health Corps based on success, seeing with peer-run programs here and in other communities. We need to create a police homeless outreach team. This will be a pilot program in which two LPD officers will be entirely dedicated to the homeless population. Officers will serve to reduce homeless-related complaints by acting as a bridge between homeless individuals and available appropriate services. The homeless outreach team would be modeled after successful programs in other communities such as Lubbock. The cost of this program will be $170-plus thousand for two full-time officers, which we do not have in our budget, just so you know that. The homeless outreach team, though, would perform various duties. This is what they would be doing. Responding to homeless-related calls for services, performing daily checks at homeless shelters, creating community partnerships with nonprofits and local businesses, educating the community about the HOT team, creating outreach and referring homeless to resources and services, assisting homeless in making appointments. Lubbock did this, and here are some of the numbers that the Lubbock HOT team accumulated that you might find very interesting. By implementing these programs, these officers had 1,744 officer interactions with the homeless population. 135 referrals given to homeless for providers or services. 296 officer transports of homeless to referral agencies. Here's the big one. Only 26 times did the homeless people refuse voluntary services. Only 26 times out of 1,744 interactions. They had 32 homeless camps that were cleaned up. The key to this is money. It will cost $170-plus thousand to fund this program. We'll have to come up with the money to fund this, or find a way to get it donated, or find a research grant or something to be able to make this happen. But this is something that we need to look into. Chief Bishop's already looked into it. He's helped with this whole process, and they're ready and willing to do this. We just have to come up with the available resources to make this happen. We need to approve the aesthetics of our city. We need to encourage businesses and the city to use deterrent technology when adding seating and landscaping. We need to add armrests to downtown benches. We need to reduce electrical access and secure outlets. This makes it less comfortable for everyone to lay around and sleep on our benches. These are some very, very innovative ideas. This is another budget item in the Parks Department that is not budgeted. So we will have to look at this in the future in order to be able to transform our park benches into something such as this. It's like when you go to an airport and someone is laying across four chairs in an airport, and it doesn't allow you to sit down. It just keeps our parks and our gathering places more aesthetic and usable for everyone. It doesn't become a place for people to sleep overnight and camp. These are some really neat ideas that this group came up with, and they're very attractive as well. They make, they make things look better from a aesthetic standpoint, and that's where we need to be looking towards helping this population and our citizens as well. So, next steps for city council. Review ordinances as Mr. Finley and his team get them to us to see how we can change what we need to change. Support this new work program spearheaded by the House of Disciples. Promote Meaningful Change-style marketing initiatives. Assist with funding in the current budget or outside funding in order to create a homeless outreach team. And support using city resources to conduct service fairs. That's where our city council is going to be focusing. Now, what about the task force in our community? We have to encourage individuals or organizations to take the lead on various outlined goals. We need to seek community fundraising or grants for unfunded goals. Continue collaboration with the organizations and task force members. Promote Meaningful Change-style marketing initiative. Participate in service fairs. And this task force will reevaluate and reconvene in four months to tweak these things that we've come up with and what we've implemented to this point. Now, this is, this is, this is it. This is where it is, all on paper. This means nothing if we cannot put this into action. I told this task force on day one, it's not enough to come up with an idea. You have to put an idea into action to make it a solution. It's so easy to come up with wish lists, all things that we would like to do or things that need to be done. The hard part is implementation. That's where the work begins, just like the saying says, "It takes a village to raise a child." It would take our whole city to implement this plan. But isn't that what we're supposed to do? Isn't that going to be worth it if we accomplish this? I know it's taken a lot of time. These task force members, they have bled literally for this community because it's not been an easy project. We have been scrutinized, criticized, and that accusation hurled at us from all directions. But we are deliberate, contemplative, prayerful, quiet, in seeking the best for everyone in our community. I started at the beginning of this, and I'll say it again. This is a very sensitive subject. We're dealing with human lives. There were a number of people who were disappointed that they were not part of this task force, and a number of people who wanted to be on this task force. Well, now is your time to step up because we need all hands on deck to get this accomplished. Thank you to the task force, to every member, the city council for listening to me, and the citizens of Longview for your suggestions along the way. Together, we will make a difference in the lives of someone else. Thank you very much. Task force members, would you stand one more time so I can see you from this way? I can tell you, I'm so proud to have been a part of this task force, to be able to listen, because I was simply a facilitator. I didn't add anything to the discussions. Because the people in this task force, this is what they live and breathe. This is what they do on a daily basis. They know these situations, and they came together with hearts and souls of purity and just love and kindness and trust and faith. And I was honored to be in the room with them. It was a real pleasure. I thank you all so much for your service and for being there for me and for our citizens. You all deserve more than I can ever say thank you to. Thank you all so much. We're now to public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Wheeler, thanks for giving me an opportunity to give you an update tonight. And for my update, I'd like to talk about some events that we have that are coming up. It's that time of the year again that we start our annual Citizens Police Academy. That will begin on September 7th through October 19th. We'll meet on Tuesday and Thursday nights in the training room with the police department. And we're now accepting applications for this. It fills up pretty quick, so I would encourage anyone that's interested to please visit our website at longviewpolice.com where you can obtain an application and fill it out and send it in to us. Also, on September 11th, we'll also be starting our Spanish-speaking Citizens Police Academy that will be held on Monday and Wednesday nights at Revolutionized Lives at 1505 South Green Street. For more information on this Citizens Police Academy, I'd ask them to call Officer Myra Gonzalez at 903-720-6656. And they can also download an application at longviewpolice.com as well. And we are advertising this police academy in Spanish as well, and it's all taught in Spanish to our Hispanic community. Also, I'd like to ask everybody, I'll be talking about this over the next couple of months, to save the date for our National Night Out kickoff party. That'll be held Tuesday, September 5th. This is a big event that the police department works in conjunction with Partners in Prevention and encouraging our citizens to have block parties, to have the officers go out, meet the citizens, and also work with us on crime prevention efforts throughout the whole city. So we're looking forward to National Night Out, first Tuesday in October. Last year, we had well over 100-plus National Night Out parties, and we certainly want to exceed what we did last year and make this year's even better. This morning, we had a tenure awards breakfast for some employees, and I'd like to recognize these officers for their years of service. Officer Jose Montavo for 15 years, Officer Nora Cheatham for 15 years of service, Officer Eric Hewitt for 25 years, Officer Craig Martin for 15 years of service, and also Sergeant Bill Farmer for his 15 years of service to the, not only the department, but the citizens of Longview. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Anything from Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Wheeler, thank you for the opportunity to update you on what the fire department has had going on since we last met. This Saturday, we will be offering our second summer HOT camp. This is our Heroes of Tomorrow Summer Camp that we sponsor. This is a great event. This camp is actually targeted for the youth in our community between the ninth and 12th grade. And we do have one opening left in this camp for Saturday, so if you're interested, please reach out to Ayesha Robinson. She's our public education specialist, and you can contact her at 903-237-1119. We'd like to see this class full. This is a great day to learn more about what the fire department does and why. Summer Safety Day. This is something that we've This is something that we've started for the last several years. We partner with the Local Department of Family Protective Services office here in Longview, the Police Department, and the Parks Department. And this is an event that we host at the Longview Swim Center at 1,001 West Fairmont. The time is 2:00 to 4:00, and this will happen also next Tuesday, July 18th. It's a good opportunity for people to come out and interact. This is where we're going to do some hot car demonstrations. If you haven't figured it out, summer's on top of us. These cars are hot. There's incidents that's happening all over the country of kids getting left in cars. So this is a great reminder to help people know not to do that. And also, it'll give people in the pool opportunity to interact with the members of our water rescue team, learn about some of their equipment and some of the techniques that we use to rescue people from water situations. Again, this is a great event, great opportunity. Just come visit the swim center, and you can participate. The Small Business Association Loan Program. This is something that is, after the fact that we experienced a tornado on Memorial Weekend, we did have enough damage in our area to qualify. This is the first level of assistance that was offered to our community. This is the only level of assistance that we did qualify for. This is something, if you're a resident that was impacted by the tornado, whether you were uninsured or underinsured, this is an opportunity for you to possibly get some assistance to help you with that recovery. Their office is set up out at Maugh Cob, and they will be closing that office down on Tuesday, July 18th at 1:00. So they've got about a two-week window, so if you haven't had the opportunity, you might want to go out there and visit with the people from this association or this organization to make sure that you're not missing out on some assistance to help you recover. Our early warning siren system status. We tested our siren system again on July 5th. We're back on schedule with our monthly test at noon on the first Wednesday of each month, and I'm happy to report that our system functioned at 100%. So all of the needed repairs that were, where we experienced the damage from that tornado on the Memorial Day holiday have now been taken care of. So our system's back to 100%, and we're going to keep on going with it. And on the tail of that, Code Red is still a free service that our city provides. We ran some numbers on this the other day, and our participation level here in the city is right around 34,000 numbers that are signed up for Code Red right now. And I know there's way more than 34,000 phone numbers inside the city of Longview, so there's plenty of room for other people to participate and take advantage of this free service. And as I mentioned earlier, it's getting hot. Summertime is on top of us. Be looking out for your friends, your coworkers, or people with heat-related illness. This is typically the time of year we're fixing the springboard to where we're going to see our call volume increase on heat exhaustion, heat stroke-related calls, people working outdoors, construction workers. Athletes will be starting back with two a day, so forth and so on. So just be mindful of that. Stay hydrated, and if you think you're experiencing any type of heat emergency, call 911, and play it safe. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief Stillman? Chief, did y'all start a driving academy where you're allowing people to take the ambulances out?
Informally, it appears that we did.
All kidding aside, thank you for the response to that. No one got injured. Great job on getting that taken care of.
Thank you. We were very fortunate.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We're now to consent agenda. Any items the council might pull off for separate discussion?
Move to approve. Second?
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Before I go any further, Mayor Greg Finan, just hold on. I need to mention one thing with our homeless task force. I forgot to say thank you to Laura Hill, to Scott Karen, to Sean for being there at every meeting from the city, for being there to help us through and keep us on track, and for Julie Woods for being there and keeping our notes going all the time and putting the presentation together for me. I appreciate y'all so much for your time and effort that you all spent outside of your normal duties as well. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate y'all. Now, Ms. Angela, we have zoning, public hearing on Z17-03.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to rezone from single-family five to general retail. Last year, City Council authorized an abandonment of a portion of Lily Street and a portion of Swansea Street. The developer has requested the abandonment of these streets in order to create a one-lot development. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission do recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second?
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We have a public hearing to consider ordinance adopting the downtown small-area plan as part of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard. This is a day that we've been looking for, towards, for a number of months. This is a continuation of the comprehensive plan that was adopted. As you are aware, a number of months ago, we convened task force to look at two very important areas in Longview, our I-20 corridor and our downtown area, and take those areas a step further and really get down in the nuts and bolts and study the area and put together a plan for revitalization and redevelopment. And here in just a moment, I'm going to introduce Cody Richardson with Freezer Nichols, our consultant, who's going to give a more detailed presentation. We do have two items tonight that we're asking you to consider adopting by ordinance, and that's really one of the first recommendations in the plans, is to adopt them as amendments to comprehensive plan by ordinance. And what that does is that allows staff to take these plans and use them in the future as we're going and making adjustments or making decisions. We can point back to those plans as direction from council that's been adopted, not just a great idea on a shelf. And as you've seen with the comprehensive plan, staff has done a really good job of taking it and moving it forward and keeping it alive. And so, I'm going to ask Cody to come up and give a presentation. He's going to give one presentation, certainly if you have questions throughout, but we are going to have two items, each planned separately with action. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, and city manager, thank you for having us. We've been working hard on this for about 10 or 11 months now. We're very excited to bring this to you. As Michael mentioned, we are presenting both plans at one time. The thing I want you to get out of this presentation is that there's tremendous opportunity in both of the study areas that we looked at. It certainly plays into the momentum of earlier presentations and things happening within your community. But the reason we looked at these two, of course, as Michael mentioned, this was one of the key things that came out of the comprehensive plan, was to establish a market-based study for both of these areas. We were tasked as consultants to identify these development opportunities, and certainly have done that. Look at conceptual master plan for both of these areas, and look at action items following on that homeless task force. What are we going to do with these plans, and how do we move those forwards? And of course, we're asking for council approval tonight on both of those plans. This has been a very exciting process. We had unanimous approval by planning and zoning. It was the first time I've ever gotten a hug after a planning and zoning meeting, so that was very interesting. But we had two committees that worked together on this, and they also voted for approval of this. These are both the study areas that we looked at for the downtown area. Marshall's on the, excuse me, the downtown's on the left side, of course. Marshall on the top, a combination of South and Cotton Street to the southeast study area. It was about 460 acres, a very large portion. As we went through this process, we realized that the development potential that we identified was not limiting, but there was only so much that we could spread out. So we were very strategic in how we identified and we assembled these lands. It's a very key part of that presentation. And then for the I-20 area, of course, it was a much larger area, 844 acres, which was basically the Estes Parkway corridor and up through Eastman, up towards the Neiman Parkus, and on the south side is Estes Drive near the Walmart. As I mentioned, we had great input in this. We had great coordination with city staff, very helpful with the EDC, very helpful. The Chamber was very helpful. Members of the council, of course, served on the board. And as I mentioned, it was a great process. I think it was very inclusive. We started back in October. As I mentioned, staff was great to work with, assisting with GIS, providing information, previous plans. We met with the advisory committee four times throughout the process. We also had a public meeting. All the meetings, of course, were posted to the public, but we had one dedicated public meeting. We met with the EDC Board. We met with the Chamber. Of course, we had the planning and zoning, and we had an online comment board. Both the plans, we have this as two plans, are divided into four chapters. The first chapter is introduction, which describes the process, the input, the challenges and opportunities facing each of the areas. We also looked at a second chapter, which was existing conditions, which looked at a physical planning assessment. It also looked at a market assessment and a program analysis. That was conducted by a subconsultant. Many of you may know Paris Rutherford has worked with the community before. And the third chapter is land use and the master plan, and I'll show some highlights of those here in just a moment. And then, of course, the implementation chapter rounds out both of the plans. The physical assessment, we looked at two planning lenses throughout this. So we step back and we look at planners, and the key goal here was, where can we identify properties for assemblage so that these identified market areas, we can identify where the best part of those are? That's based on existing footprints, land uses, assembly and the size of blocks in the area. As I mentioned, we tied that to a market assessment. We had trade area analysis conducted for both of the study areas. And the key things that came out of that, those are based on drive times, was the identification of a program. And so we looked at categories of retail office, several types of residential, and then a previous hotel study that was conducted by the city. We took this information, and we began to narrow that down into what we call projects. And so, what's on the screen now is the downtown master plan. And so the areas that you see in color there are new development types. We test this by actually laying out product types, matching with parking needs, matching with streetscape needs, and look at that. The key thing that we looked at for the downtown area was the land between the medical center and what we call a downtown core, Tyler Street. And so the key things are happening there, and we really focused on residential infill, talked about critical mass, you may have heard that term before, to support local businesses, downtown population. There were 12 projects, private projects identified, so those would be led by developers within the downtown area. And for each of those, I'm not going to go into detail of each of those. We can certainly answer questions on each of those. But the plan itself shows those projects, examples, gives a detailed description of those, the investment type of expected, the type of units or square footage that would be associated with those projects. And as part of the plan, we did some great things we think could be used as marketing for both of these plans. This is the downtown area at First Street and Tyler, looking towards the medical center. And this is the vision of what that could be one day, based on those projects. Of course, there's flexibility within this. We understand how development happens, and there would need to be flexibility there. But very interesting opportunities here with the massing of buildings located at streets and an interesting streetscape, and really making that connection from the core up towards the medical center. We did the same level of assessment for the I-20 area. This was, this looked at four main projects. But what we noticed here was there was obviously some commercial corridor needs, and we heard that from the committee about revitalization, but it took a focus also within the neighborhoods surrounding it. So you have great things in this area with the university, with the frontage along the interstate, but really looking, how can we, how can we help the neighborhoods within that through streetscape and better connectivity, through branding, through infill opportunities? We really felt like these neighborhoods were under-positioned. They're affordable neighborhoods. There's lots available, infrastructure available for that type of development. As I mentioned, there were four products or projects in this study area. Outside of the Neighborhood Renaissance, there was opportunities that we looked at along Estes Parkway for corridor revitalization. We looked at what we call a campus gateway next to Laterno University. And of course, there's opportunities associated with the interchange along the interstate itself. Similar to the downtown, we looked at a couple renderings to help kind of frame what these might be. This is MLK Boulevard, looking back to the west between Betha and Craig Avenue, and this would be an example of what the Neighborhood Renaissance program we're talking about, with new branding for the neighborhood, limited, but some new parks and those type of investments within the, very exciting type things. And of course, we looked at the university, a great asset to not just South Longview, but all of Longview. This is just, this is on Marbury, just north of Green Street. The campus would be on the right side of the screen here, and this would be the vision for that. It would be a mixed-use style campus development. We call, we often call this town and gowns of the relationship with the university itself, but a very exciting project. It could include student housing, loft condos, cafe, bookstores. You can imagine the type of environment across the university. And then finally, what we looked at was implementation. Of course, this is the action items. This is the marching orders, not just for city staff, but other organizations within the community. And we divided it into four categories. We looked at regulatory actions is the first one, and this is, I call this getting the ducks in the row. So this is zoning policies, whether that's proactive or reactive type addressment, but you're certainly looking at the UDC, Unified Development Code update right now, and we would recommend that the land use and those housing and other land use types would be incorporated in that. We also looked at economic and financing strategies, and so this is the how, this is the who. We usually divide this up into three actions. Public actions, which are public investment that leads the private investment. That's kind of not always the case. So we usually like to look at the second one, where the public and the private are working together to implement these projects. We find that's a better return for the city. And of course, there's incentives that other organizations and the city itself could offer to help reduce the risk to some of those developments. The third thing in implementation that we looked at was communication and marketing. This is really telling the story. The Chamber and EDC do an excellent job of this now, but it's about identifying those properties, telling that story to the development community. And then finally, we looked at the development types themselves. So the projects that we talked about in each of the study areas, we took that a step further, and we looked at what are the private investments and what are those projects that they would lead, and then what are the public investments that could incorporate with those street extensions, infrastructure, branding, signage, those type of elements. And so that's 10 or 11 months of work in 10 minutes here, so, but I would say thank you. I think you have a great plan in front of you. I think the council members that were a part of that, we're very excited. We think you have a great future here, and we're asking for your adoption. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, this requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on the downtown for small area downtown?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We're in a hurry, aren't we?
It's a good thing.
Now, for the I-20 corridor small-area plan, this requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries as well. Thank you to city staff, to you all for your diligence, for the council members, this community, for EliteCo for sponsoring half of the cost of these downtown and I-20 corridor plans to the Chamber. Everyone that spent time doing this, this is one of those things, once again, that we would love to see come to fruition, and it just takes, it takes vision, and it takes commitment, and it takes money. So I think we have two of those three. We've got to find the third one. So, thank you all very much. Appreciate y'all. Now, out of the community interest, Mr. Moore.
I would like to invite everybody to a town hall meeting that I'm holding on August 7th at 7:00 PM Monday at the Pine Tree ISD Community Center. And for this meeting, I'm going to be concentrating on our proposed budget for next fiscal year. Mr. Willard will have presented it to council about 10 days before our town hall meeting, and I want to talk about that. The budget is probably the most important thing we regularly do up here. It affects all 82,000-plus of us every day of the year, 24 hours a day. So your input is very, very important. Second, I would like to introduce to you our new granddaughter. Aowen Gwendolyn Freed was born three weeks ago today, and we're very proud of her, obviously. So there she is, and that concludes my prepared remarks.
Congratulations, Ed. Very happy for you all. Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, may I just say, great job to you and the task force for the work you've put in regarding homelessness. Now, that beautiful girl, I just don't know who she is. Make yourself right at home with a new product from Bank Corp. South. Low-down payment, 100% financing, no mortgage insurance. This product is great for first-time homebuyers, also perfect for low-to-moderate-income families and community. And that young lady in the picture, if you're interested in this project, her name happens to be Ricky Snotty. I can give you phone numbers and contact information. If you're looking for a home, please give her a call. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Snotty. Not you teenage guys that want to date with her, because that's one beautiful girl right there. You stay away. Ms. Wiggins.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I am fired up to have adopted the small-area and I-20 plans. And as a council member, I just have to say, having been involved since the very beginning of this, this is just really exciting for me. So no, I'm not rushing, Mayor. I'm just ready, you know? We'll find the money. We'll find the money. We'll do something. Anyway, good job, and thanks, Cody, Freezyn Nichols. Thank you, and thank you, staff. Also, tomorrow, July 14th at 7:00 PM, the Longview NAACP will host its banquet and scholarship gala. It will be at the Summit Club. Tickets are $45. I'm sure that you can pay at the door. I'm happy to say that the city, we have supported this event this year, and the speaker will be James Douglas, who is the professor of law at the Thurgood Marshall School of Law. So, please try to go if at all possible. Last but not least, I am co-hosting a town hall, kind of a back-to-school event. Oh, you have the flyer, Sean. You rock. With Shan Bauer on Tuesday, August 22nd at 6:00 PM at Broaden Recreation Center. We're inviting people to come out. Our districts parallel each other, basically. They overlay each other. And so, we want people to come out before school, I think that's before school starts, or right around that time. Share your concerns with us so that we can all get on the right foot. From the city's perspective, we'll talk about some issues that may be affecting District Three, and we'll move ahead, because communication is key if we're going to accomplish anything in our community. And the last thing I will say, great presentation, Mayor. Thank you for your work in addressing the homeless issue, and thank you to the committee members.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Shahara.
Yeah, that was all I was going to say as well. I just really appreciate you taking the ball and running with that. That is, you know, as you see on the list, I tried to write everything down, as you were saying, and there's a lot of things, and the city role in that is, you know, pretty small. It's going to be a big chunk of money, because I love the officer idea. That's amazing. But that's really just stepping up and handling a community problem where we're going to be able to solve a couple, but really, the whole community is going to have to come together to do that. So, I just really appreciate your leadership and putting that together, and everybody that participated all of the time that went into that is really, that's really important work. So, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wright.
Yes, I just want to thank the city staff and Freezyn Nichols. I think you all have done a great job with this presentation, with what you've put together. I've heard people, not a whole lot of people, but I know there's some, there's other people in the city that haven't talked to me about it, think, boy, you spent a lot of money to do this kind of thing. Couldn't we have done something else with the money? But to me, what we could have done is sit back and let downtown decay. We could have sit back and let I-20 become a, more of an eyesore. But I think we're being proactive. I wish all this could just plot down on the ground and be good to go. It's not going to happen. It's going to take a lot of money. It's going to take, we've gotten two things tonight. We got the homeless that we're going to be very involved in, and now we have this that we're going to be very involved in. But it's going to take a lot of leadership from the city now to get this done. But I sure appreciate everything that's been done, and I think it's a great step forward for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Pirtle.
Well, I was the brunt of a lot of criticism on this thing tonight, but until you sit up here and you see both sides of this budget, until you see both sides of what's going on up here, we accept that. And I do want to let the people that were against a lot of the money that was spent tonight or in the past year realize that if we do not grab the bull by the horns and invest in this, it's like David said, nothing will ever be done. We have to invest in the community. We have to, we have to step out and take those criticisms and, you know, and just, and go through with it. And we accept that, so I just wanted everybody to know that there are two sides to every story on this, and we have to look at it from both sides of it and make that decision. And I think that we did make the right decision by spending those funds, and in the future, my kids and everybody else's that are sitting here will benefit from that. So, thank you.
Mr. Pirtle, thank you. And remember, Mr. Pirtle, great leaders absorb the anger. We don't throw punches back. You've done well. Thank you, sir. Mr. Willard. Well, I have some interesting community interest items. First off, we hosted the regional TML meeting here in Longview last week, a week and a half ago, and it went very well. It was a wonderful meeting. But I want to just quickly say thank you to John Martin at R&amp;K, who answered the call at the spur of a moment to help us with some needs that we needed. And I appreciate John Martin for stepping up and being a community leader as he is, and for R&amp;K for helping us out. Also, we had a wonderful Fourth of July celebration at the fairgrounds at Mon Cop. What an amazing event city staff put on again this year. The volunteers, it was without a doubt the best fireworks show I have ever seen. It was phenomenal. It was just a joy to be out there to see the diversity of Longview, out there together collectively, enjoying something that we could provide for them, and it does my heart good to know that we take the time to do that. It's a labor, but it's a labor of love, and I thank all of you all, Laura, all of you all that sat up there and sweated in the heat and drove around and ferried people back and forth, and the things that you all did, they don't go unnoticed. We appreciate it, even though I know it was hot. People appreciate what you did. And I want to thank some people that really made, we have a sponsor tent, the mayor's sponsor tent. And this year, I, my goal was to get everything donated to that tent so that we could put that money towards providing for the community. And we had some people really step up, including Mike Kittenner, who donated the food, A-1 tent, A-1 rentals for the tent and the chairs and the tables, Giglio for the adult drinks, Made Right for the soft drinks, Nanny Goats for cookies. I hope I didn't leave anybody out, but I'm just telling you that was, people stepped up and provided, and we have a giving community, and it's so nice to see that when it comes together for something that helps our community, and everybody got to participate, and appreciate that.
Couldn't forget Kelly for the desserts.
Oh, yeah, and my wife did make some really wonderful cakes for that dessert, for the desserts out there. I don't want to publicize that, because I get big as a house when I eat her baking. But, okay, tonight, I have a very special employee who is celebrating 10-year anniversary with the city of Longview. He began working here on June 25th, 2007. Congratulations to our city manager, David Willard. Thank you for 10 years of service here at the city of Longview. We have a 10-year service pin and a small token of our appreciation. David, come up front. Come on, David. I'm going to tell you all the truth. Working with David Willard is one of the joys of being the mayor of Longview and of being a city council representative, because I sat on this council for nine years in that seat right there, and I've worked with, I think, five city managers before David. And I have never been around anyone with such integrity, such poise, such compassion, such a caring, kind spirit for others, to be able to lead by example, to be able to get people to follow where he goes without having to ask. And that's a sign of a true leader. And David, you have been a warrior for our community for 10 years. I can't wait for the next 10. I'm excited about that. But it's been a joy to be in your presence, because I see how staff responds to you, and that, once again, is a sign of a true leader. So, this is a token of our appreciation, but this is a pin that we want you to wear proudly, David, because you deserve every minute of this, and we thank you and we appreciate your services, city of Longview. Thank you, my friend. It's a privilege to call you friend. Ladies and gentlemen, I want you all to realize something. You all should all stand up. Everything that we do in this city revolves around this gentleman right here. Every employee recognition we have, everything we do, every budget we pass because of David Willard. He deserves every bit of that. Well done, my friend. Thank you. We also have, you all do this on purpose, don't you? The itty-bitty beach party with the itsy-bitsy yellow polka dot bikini, huh, Sean? On Saturday, July 16th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Longview Swim Center for children ages eight and under with parents. Children under seven must be accompanied by a parent in a swimsuit at all times. Games, prizes, free snow cones, free prize for the first 100 kids. That sounds like a lot of fun. Veterans Plaza, Teague Park. Can we please help honor our American veterans? Donate today, vetplaza.org. I want your $5. I'm going to continue to say it until I'm no longer here, or until we fund this project. We're $60,000 short. Send me your $5, vetplaza.org. Thank you very much. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the city of Longview. Art Walk, Longview, July 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM downtown. That is a fantastic event to be at. If you haven't been to that, you should go. It really is cool to see all the different things on the streets down there. Exit Strategy Escape Room Grand Opening, Friday, July 14th. The Field of Dreams exhibit at Gregg County Historical Museum. The Great Texas Balloon Race is coming up, July 28th to 30th. Once again, that's like our fireworks celebration. This is one of those events that if you don't take time to go do this, you are absolutely missing the boat. It is a phenomenal event to be out there at the airport, to see these balloons, the entertainment, the atmosphere. It's amazing that Longview, Texas puts this on, so don't forget to go out there and enjoy the balloon race. For more information in these events, check out our calendar or visit longviewtexas.com to learn more. Survey. Okay. Oftentimes, elected officials, as we have tonight, host town hall meetings to engage with their constituents. Would you be more or less likely to attend a town hall meeting if it were conducted online? More likely, less likely? Wouldn't attend either way? Well, you all that wouldn't attend either way, I don't like y'all. Y'all need to be, get in the groove, one way or the other. Yes or no? 65% said more likely to attend, which was very encouraging. I'm glad to hear that, because I think it's important that we connect with our constituents. For fun, which outdoor activity in Longview are you most likely to participate in in this summer to beat the heat? Visit an indoor amusement park, trampoline park, like Top Fun, Air Year, or G-Force? 17%. This is the library, possible to participate in the summer reading program? 17%. Go to the mall and shop? 19%. Go to one of our area lakes? 30%. This is the soon-to-be-open Escape Room? 8%. We have some others. But, you know, look what all we have to do in Longview, gang. If you want to get out of the heat, we have plenty of things to do. We are so blessed to have the ability to go inside or outside, lakes, shopping, entertainment, inside, outside. We have Lear Park. We have all kinds of activities. So, you know, be active. Enjoy what we have and be a participant, not a side liner, because we're going to have a virtual town hall meeting, because 65% of you all said you would attend. So, Tuesday, August 1st, I would like to invite you for our virtual town hall meeting. It's going to be an opportunity to discuss any issue, idea, or question you might have for me about the city of Longview, all for the convenience of you at your home on your smartphone. Virtual town meeting will be broadcast live on the city of Longview Facebook page, on City View Municipal Television, and on longviewtexas.gov. You can submit questions in advance or during the event by submitting an email to mayor@longviewtexas.gov. You'll also be able to submit questions or comments during the meeting on the city Facebook page. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov/vtm. The reason I decided to do this is because when we were doing our book clubs, which we're going to continue, by the way, we would, every Monday night, have a live broadcast